You know, on this earth, our Creator has many names. Most of us in this circle, we know him as Grandfather. It's like a family tradition. The head of the household, the speaker for the people, speaker for the family is usually the Grandfather. And then we have Mother Earth, and we have the Father-Son. Then we are the children, and everything on this earth is the children. We're all related to everything on this earth because Creator created everything for us. Now, apparently you hear the word Star Child, who is the son of the Creator. So, we invite the Star Child into all of our ceremonies. So, pray with me. Pray from your heart, and pray in your own way. And we pray together, and that's the strength of all of us. Oh, Grandfather, our sacred Mother Earth, our Father-Son, air, fire, water, grandmother Mo, Star Child, all of our ancestors on our mother's side and our father's side, all of our spirit helpers, all of the angels, who else got you come and be with us today? And give us the blessings that we need. Let us all work from our hearts and speak from our hearts. We know, Grandfather, when we speak from our hearts, that it is the truth. The only time that there's no truth is when we speak from our minds. So, let us all speak from our hearts, and bless our hearts, Grandfather. Keep us all strong. Guide and protect every one of us. Protect our families, our relatives, our friends. Even though they have differences with us, let those conflicts be gone. So, Grandfather, we ask the spirits and ancestors of this land to be with us, and we thank them for allowing us to be here. We have a good way to help this land, to help our brother Ramon. Brother Ramon, we've been doing these ceremonies for close to forty years, and all the ceremonies, a very important medicine people. We ask them to come in. Rayna Stone, Johnny Franco, Songman, Phil Hunter. All of them, all of them that's in here. And we thank them for having the ceremonies here and blessing the land when they were here. So, today, Grandfather, I'd like to keep us strong and help us, and help us in the best way that we need help. And love this land. Bless everybody, everybody that comes here, even the ones that are really sick. Let this land heal them, and touch their hearts, and clean their hearts. So, then, Grandfather, we thank you. We thank you for the gifts that you give us, and all of your creations. So, Grandfather, thank you.
Two fourteen. Is the sign-in sheet still going on?
Yes, sir.
ER, can we get approval of the agenda for eight?
I approve.
Second. Okay. Agenda is approved, passed. Official business and new business. We'll start up with our first item on the agenda, clarification of current board members of Budan Center of Inquiry. Want to elaborate a little bit more on that?
Yes. So, as some of you may know, or may not know, there's been a claim of board of directors and new presidents for the same Budan Clinic as Mr. Morales has been president, and there's already been a board. They came and have falsely tried to perpetrate and act as if they've been president and board of directors, and have been making unilateral decisions that are adverse to the customs and the normal traditions that you have here. It is our understanding that they have done this to change the way this land is used, and maybe even try to sell some of it. So, the first agenda and order of business is to oust these de facto and false president and board of directors to preserve your culture and your customs and the way that the Budan Center is run. So, the first agenda would be to clarify that they were improperly placed as president and board of directors without a meeting, without a hearing, without a council member vote. They did not follow any protocols or articles of incorporation through the bylaws that have been registered with the Secretary of State. As such, this first task on the agenda is to formally come to a vote and a decision to remove them of any power or claim to power that they thought they had falsely, which they wrongly acquired.
Could each person that speaks identify themselves prior to speaking? There's a lot of this stuff going on here.
Of course. I apologize. Not a problem, man. My name, Al- Anna, my name is Julio Vigaro. I am the office manager and case investigator for Attorney James Drake in Newport Beach, California. And Attorney James Drake is at our disposal at a phone call. We're very informed and well, and have worked with Mr. Morales and his family, and are here in good faith and on behalf to convey any information and answer any questions that you may have.
Do I have a motion?
You may need a name, then.
Okay. Do I have a motion to remove the false board? Marsha Hunter Estrada as president?
I'm Marsha Hunter.
Second.
Suzanne Moore.
Erica Castillo, second.
What can I ask for?
And do I have a motion?
Sorry, I'm late. We're out of time. Rhonda.
Rhonda Hunter. Motion. And do I have a motion to remove Deborah Hopkins? Motion, Erica Castillo.
Suzanne Moore, second.
Tiffany Quinto, third.
So, Marsha Estrada Hunter, or Hunter Estrada, Deborah Hopkins, and Rhonda Hunter have been removed from the board, the false board. Moving on to the second, the second business on the agenda, quiet title action to establish legitimate board of Budan Center Inquiry. Would you like to elaborate on that a little bit?
Of course. So, as you may know, the false de facto board has made an equal claim to this land. We know, based off our records and forty years of consistent maintenance and care of this land, that we have a stronger claim. So, what a quiet title action does is it brings us into court where we may ask them discovery questions. These are questions in which we're asking them, how is it that you feel that you are now president? What processes did you follow to become president? Who allowed or voted or motion for you to be president? And when did this happen? And which procedures did you follow? We feel strongly that they cannot correctly or rightly answer these questions because we have been here for forty years. They had noticed to be here, they are not here. This will bring us into court so that we can provide our evidence and our proof of our long tenure here, and show to a judge that Mr. Morales and the Budan Center, as it operates now, shall continue to operate in the manner that it has been, and that this sanctuary will be preserved and unchanged. This quiet title action is a legal formality that the state uses so that we can have legal notification and a record that we here who are present own the land outright and have accurate and proper title to it, so there won't be any contested claims in the future. This is to cement and solidify that this board will have this property so that it can't be challenged again in the future, and we will have it in writing and paper with the county recorder in this county.
Do I have a motion to proceed with the quiet title action?
I, David Alvarez, motion. Will we proceed?
Eric Castillo, second motion.
I have a question. Are you following parliamentary procedure?
Yes.
Okay. So, when someone makes a motion and someone seconds it, then you call for the question, and then you ask all in favor, because you're not really taking a vote of the group here. But just, yeah.
So, can we take a...
Let's go back to the beginning.
Yeah, can we move to previous question? Do I have a motion to go back to the previous question?
Okay. I made a motion to remove the existing board, the people that were mentioned, Rhonda Hunter, Deborah Hopkins, and Marsha Hunter Estrada, and I'd like to add to that, and any other individuals that, at this point, we don't know their name. So, that's the motion I made. Well, it would have to be the same person that... That would be Mr. Castillo.
Second motion. Can we have a discussion? Any discussion on the matter? Seeing no discussion, can we vote?
I motion that we accept that, that motion of asking him not to be on this board.
All in favor? Raise your hand.
Can you please keep your hands up?
Right.
Thank you.
For the record, my name's David Alvarez, Senior.
Okay. Moving to the next item, which is number two, the quiet title action. Do we have any further discussion on the quiet title action?
I just have a question. Was it beneficial to have all the members here sign notarized statements to the fact that they're here and they are the members for your court proceedings?
I believe we took a roll sheet, so the members that were present, correct, is going to be present for our quiet title and for the ouster, and we will use that as for that along with the minutes will show the court who was present, who voted, and what the dispositions of these motions were.
Yeah, will hold as strongly as a notarized statement?
No. A notarized statement is still hearsay, which it would be better to have the witnesses there, but because we're following parliamentary procedures, we will have transcripts, we're having it recorded, everyone is signing in, and these motions will be valid as records.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did everyone see that deal?
Yes. Just checking.
She's giving us her strength. A notary simply is stating before the state of California that you identified yourself as being who you are, and that's your signature. It does not hold any weight to what you signed. So, yeah, people are misinformed about notarization sometimes.
Okay. So...
Thank you for your question, Grandma.
If there's no further discussion, I'd like to have a vote on the matter. All that are for this matter, please raise your hand.
Could you state the title of the question?
Quiet title action to establish legitimate board of Budan Center of Inquiry. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Any that are opposed?
No opposition.
No opposition. That motion, or that item passes?
We're also supposed to call for extensions just to stay by Robert's rules?
No, it's not necessary.
It isn't necessary.
It is not necessary.
Thank you.
Hey, excuse me, for the record, you want to identify?
Yes. Sorry, I apologize. Some came in late.
My name is Ron Avadizian. I'm a professional registered parliamentarian with the National Association of Parliamentarians. I'm not a lawyer. I'm not here to give legal advice. I'm here to advise you on proper parliamentary procedure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, moving on to our third item on the agenda, appointment of council, oh, actually, Julio, the second one?
Yes.
We'll be supposed to identify our members, our board members in the second agenda item?
Yes.
Should we have to vote your nominations?
So, the second agenda item also requires that we appoint new board members?
Or was there the original board members, they had never been removed, because these were false de facto presidents that came in. We'd never recognized their power. We feel that, you know, they went through illegitimate means, did not notify the members, were not voted in, and just, you know, filed with the Secretary of State as de facto president and board. So, is there already a board in place?
Well, that would just leave Ramon and Ruben as the sitting board, but there's actually five positions.
Okay.
We still would have the secretary, the vice president, and sergeant of arms. It would be empty.
Can we vote on that today, on the empty seats? Because...
If you didn't put that in the notice of the meeting, I wouldn't advise you go ahead and fill the positions.
Okay.
I believe we did. It's in the letter that we sent out. The positions would be filled?
The original agenda stayed at that.
Yeah, and the original agenda that we sent, we got certified letters.
Do we have to remove all of the five board members from the very beginning, including Ramon and Ruben?
Do we have to start from scratch, sir?
No. Whatever position you're already filled, remain filled, you would just be filling vacancies.
I hate to keep interjecting. I'm from the Taco Latry. Originally, our thought process as a group was that if we removed the entire board, then we would start a new timeline, whereas if the two members remain on the board, then their time on the board is reduced, because there is a time limit on the sitting of certain of board members. And so, that was our thought process. If we remove the entire board, then we could start fresh, even if we re-nominated them and voted them in.
No. Shouldn't do that.
Decision for them to make.
Would that hold legally?
Well, the sitting president and the sitting board members were never removed, so they're still in place. If the board wants to have a vote and even re-select them or maintain them and just fill the vacancy, this seems like something that Budan, as a community, will have to decide. Legally, your board has remained the same. They have been in place. They have been conducting business as usual. You've still had your monthly meetings. You know, you still respond to them as, you know, as their roles, as the board. So, if you wanted to fill vacancies, I feel that maybe at this meeting, it may be a bit more expeditious, and maybe in next month, when you reconvene or once we're through this process, it may be an item to revisit. There's sort of a lot on the table, but I wouldn't put that, you know, as a community to, you know, to shelve it, to come back to, is what I would suggest, probably.
Okay. So, the positions that are open at this point are the secretary, sergeant of arms, and vice president. Those are the vacancies that we have at this point. So, we can begin nominations for those three positions.
Wait a minute.
Sergeant of arms and vice president.
If there's open positions and we're making votes...
I'm gonna make Keith Turner for vice president. Do you accept Mr. Turner?
I thought there was a secretary.
All in favor for our discussion?
Secretary Hunter.
Any discussion of having Keith Turner as a vice president?
He'd make a wonderful vice president. Everyone, we're voting?
Not yet. We're just in discussion.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I'm wishing luck. I think that Keith Turner has been around, he's familiar with traditions, certainly practices them, and I just talks about him, is familiarized with him, he actually practices them. He teaches well, he's a fine teacher. One of the best ones, you know. And I'm sure that, speaking for my children, my relatives, my community, my tribe, they send my, they send blessings, that he will continue doing what he's doing up there. I speak for my people in some way, because I'm one of the senior members in my tribe. And I would vote for him to be said, to be a vice president. He's pretty much knows the ways here, his respect for the land. He's an elder in the community, certainly on the community, you know, universities, wellness centers, the recovery homes. He's their spiritual leader there, not just here. So, he's connected strongly across the US with the Indian community. So, I don't think that we could really, at this point, ask for anybody better than Keith Turner to be our vice president.
I'm a family member of the Budan community. I've only known Sweek, but my spiritual leader, Sweek.
He is a sweet sweat leader.
See, I'm lost in thoughts. Anyway, I've only known him for the land, and as our water purer, and I follow tradition and, you know, any advice given or taught, and so I think he has the knowledge, the skill, and the ability to be, you know, our vice president.
Oh.
I do. Before I called him Sweek.
Any further discussion on the matter?
I'd like to say a few words if I may. My name's Arques Castillo, from the school here in Apache, in Tarbomara. And I've been coming to this land for ceremony for about five years. And I'd like to state that I do feel that Uncle Pete is perfect in position, and also the current members are holding positions that are at this meeting, Ruben and Ramon. And I'd like to say that these positions, I feel my vote's coming from the fact that these gentlemen are stewards of the land, and stewards of the medicine. Not only as they bring healing to the people that come to this place, but for those who come here and get healing, they go out into the world, and I know healing is a subjective term, but I would say more of say wellness. And as Uncle David was saying over here, that Uncle Pete, he does participate in other organizations, and one of them is at the American Indian Health Project for the youth camp of Dona, and I've seen the good work that he's done over there, along with the work that he's done here for myself and my healing process. And these are the type of people that we should have on our board, and these are the type of people that should hold office, because these are stewards of the land, stewards of the medicine, they take care of these things, and they take care of the people. And anyone who comes in these positions, not only should come here and go through the due process that we have already in place, but also to present themselves to the people, and let the people, I would say, vouch for their kindness, vouch for their well intentions, and also not only is there intentions, but they've what they've already done for this land and for the community. And I feel that these men have, that's all I have to say.
Oh.
Have you signed this ready?
I haven't signed it.
Any other discussion? Seeing that there's no further discussion, I'd like to take a vote. All those in favor of Keith Turner being the vice president of Budan Center of Inquiry? Can you raise your hand?
AKA Sweet Keith.
All right, thank you. Any other votes? Please raise your hand. So, seeing that there is a majority vote for Keith being our vice president, can I get a big a ho? Our sergeant of arms position is vacant. Does anybody like to nominate anybody for sergeant of arms?
I nominate David Alvarez, Senior, Sergeant of Arms.
Second?
Oh, sorry, second. Do we need a third?
Any discussion?
Well, I'd like to say that I think David's background makes him the excellent choice as a sergeant of arms to keep the meetings within its time limit, keep our speakers within a certain time limit, because, again, we're from the Taco Latry, we can go on and on and on and on and on, but I think he would be a good fit, so thank you for accepting that nomination.
Oh. Any other discussion? Seeing no further discussion, I'd like to take a vote. All those in favor for David Alvarez, Senior, being sergeant of arms? Please raise your hand. Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing that there's a, everybody voted for, a unanimous decision, thank you, for David Alvarez, Senior, being sergeant of arms, congratulations with a ho. And who was the third position, sergeant of arms? Secretary.
I nominate Suzanne Moore.
I second it.
I third it.
Uh, thank you for that nomination. Um, I will tell you that I will accept the nomination, uh, it may be only on a temporary basis. But I, I'm very honored and I believe in you.
Any discussion?
I'd like to say something. Uh, I know, I known Suzanne for many, many years. And, uh, she's, uh, tribal for my community. And, uh, she's pretty active when it comes to, uh, issues of American Indian people. And, uh, she's pretty active, uh, participating in activities that have to do with, uh, the wellness of women. And, uh, certainly the wellness of this place here. She's a good cook. So, uh, you know, she wears many hats in her own right. You know, she's a farm woman, you know, does farming on her own. She's not familiar to hard work. She's not unfamiliar to it. So, when she comes up here, she steps the boots just like anybody else. She works on her own land, so she cares for the land here a lot. So, she's not just known as serves as our secretary here in past, but she's multitasked up here. She's worked the land pretty good up here. She's not shy to get her hands dirty. She works with the young women. I know she works a lot with my daughter. My daughter has a disability, she has Down syndrome, so she works a lot, young women, to help them come home. Appreciate your help, Susan, in many areas.
Ooh.
With us up here. She drives long distance from up there with her elder by her side there. How old is your mom?
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four.
And she's still got all her marbles. She plays with them all.
She brings to us some very powerful medicine. When she brings her elder here, she blesses us. And, uh, in these times now, it's difficult to see that kind of, uh, connection, you know. So, I really appreciate both of them coming up here and blessing us in that way, you know. So, I, I think that.
I'm blessed.
That this secretary job would be a blessing to us if we nominated.
Ooh.
Oh, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing then, I'd like to vote for Suzanne Moore as secretary. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Uh, anybody that opposed, please raise your hand.